Hello, I'm Juliette Parker and I'm running for the Groton Town Council. I am a lifelong Groton resident. I grew up in Paquannic Bridge as the oldest of six children and I am a proud mom and a graduate of Fitch High School, class of 1991. I have a bachelor's degree in legal studies, cum laude, and alpha, beta, kappa, and both of my daughters are currently enrolled in college. I am a passionate advocate for our youth and for public safety. I have served the community for over 14 years as the City of Groton's Chief of Police Administrative Secretary. I also volunteer in different capacities such as being involved with my church and Girl Scouts and other nonprofit organizations. Since 2017, I have been a Groton Town Counselor. Prior to being a Town Counselor, I was on the RTM for District 2 from 2013 into 2017. While on the RTM, I served on the Public Safety Committee. I am currently part of the Groton Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Community Committee and a board member of the TVCCA. I also just became a Connecticut Certified Municipal Official. With that being said, as part of the Town Council, I have learned over my years of public service to be respectful of colleagues', time, and views. We are all volunteers. I would like to see more mom-and-pop-style businesses. We need to encourage more of these types of businesses in town. As Groton's diverse, I believe our businesses should reflect our community and provide economic opportunities and encourage our youth to higher aspirations. The health and welfare of our community members is very important to me. I would like to see more support for all our citizens, no matter the age, race, or gender. I value all and want to ensure that we all have support and access to a more livable life. As a woman of color and a professional public servant, I have worked hard to ensure that I was doing what was best for me and my family and my community. When my girls were younger, I completed my bachelor's degree while working full-time and volunteering in my community. I believe in giving back and trying to be a positive role model for my children and others. I live by the mantra of "community first" in that I believe when I raised the river, all boats would float. I'm Juliette Parker. Please vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Hello, I am Diane Barber and I am running for Town Council. I have lived in Groton for more than 30 years. My two children attended the Groton Public Schools and are now flourishing. I have had a successful career at Foxwoods for over 27 years as a gaming manager and was awarded Employee of the Year in 2017. I am now a co-owner of New London County Contracting. In the early 2000s, I was co-founder of the Groton Good Government Political Action Committee, which was started to oversee the budget and yearly tax increases. I served one term on the Town Council and understand the obligation it demands. My career at Foxwoods taught me how to listen, negotiate, and be respectful to people of opposite opinions. I became a master at problem-solving. My main goal as a council would be to maintain the quality of life while tackling the budget to keep it affordable for generations to come. I am also for responsible economic development, which is why I am opposed to the Mystic Oral School development as it is planned, which the current Town Council unanimously voted for. I would work hard to stop the planned development. I would also investigate the process of the vetting contractors who are chosen to build in Groton and work to upgrade the process to avoid another costly mistake. Lastly, I believe it is time for the council to go back to in-person council meetings. The citizens' petitions portion of the Town Council meetings were changed with the current council to only one meeting a month. I would fight to bring it back to every Town Council meeting to give the residents an option to speak to the counselors. I would sincerely appreciate your vote on November 2nd so I can go to work for Groton. Thank you, and please like me on Facebook. Diane Marley Barber.
Hello, Groton residents. My name is Melinda Cassiri. I'm a 35-year-old married mother of two children. I have an eight-year-old son and six-year-old daughter who attend Groton Public Schools. I have now lived in Groton for a decade, and I could not be more delighted to have picked Groton as the place to raise my children. Before stepping away from my career to raise my family, I once dedicated my life to public service. While earning my bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice Investigative Services from the University of New Haven, I volunteered as a firefighter and earned my Firefighter I certification while going to school full-time and working part-time as a security guard and waitress. Just a few months after earning my degree, I was hired as a police officer and served as a crisis intervention-trained officer before leaving my career after the birth of my first child. Both of these experiences give me a unique public safety perspective and familiarity with service that I can bring to the council. I worked in two diverse communities where it was my job to problem-solve, actively listen, pay close attention to details, be aware of the communities I worked for, use critical thinking skills, be assertive, work as a team, and positively impact lives with empathy. In 2019, the residents of District 5 gave me an opportunity to serve a community once again when I was elected to the RTM as a District 5 representative, the community where I am raising my family. I currently serve as the Town Council Liaison on the Public Safety Committee and on the Civilian Oversight Research Committee. My positions on the RTM have demonstrated that I understand the inner workings of Groton government and therefore am ready to act and am prepared on day one. I am a public safety advocate. I fiercely supported, contributed to conversations, and advocated for the funding for the new social worker position for the Town of Groton Police Department. I would like to continue to make positive changes in all aspects of public safety in our community, including funding more social worker positions and creating a community policing unit. Community members would get the opportunity to know police officers in positive, community-oriented interactions rather than only meeting officers when they reactively respond to calls for service. I would also like to see the Town of Groton fund the North Stonington Bridge so that residents living on the Groton side of that bridge receive the same response times for emergency services as the taxpayers of Stonington. I'm also a mom and would be the only Town Counselor with elementary-age students in the Groton Public School System. You may see me at Paquannic Plains Park coaching 6-7 soccer for Groton Soccer Club. I am an invested parent in our community. I believe our Town Council should represent Groton, which is why it is important to have the representation of a parent on the council. Having the perspective of a parent whose children are currently growing up in the school system is vital to ensuring our children are considered in all decisions about Groton. Because I am a stay-at-home parent, my family is a one-income family. I believe that Groton should be affordable and safe for all families. Keeping taxes low and making sure we sustain our services for families is a high priority. All Groton families should prosper. I am an avid runner. I ran my first marathon a year ago through the streets of Groton and Stonington. I understand the importance of infrastructure upkeep and maintenance and want to ensure our roads and bridges are fixed and maintained. Part of our infrastructure upkeep is planning for the devastating effects of climate change. I want to ensure that Groton is planning and preparing for resiliency and sustainability as a coastal community. Thank you for listening and for your dedication to Groton by voting in this upcoming election. I hope I have earned your vote. You can vote for me on Row A, Column 2, on November 2nd.
Hello, my name is Kathy Chase and I am running for the Groton Town Council, and I'm happy to be here with you today. I began serving our community in 2016 after being appointed to the Charter Revision Commission. Following that, I was elected to the Representative Town Meeting, or RTM, on which I am currently serving my second two-year term representing District 1. Now, I am proud to be running for Town Council in hopes of serving all of Groton. As both a mother and grandmother, I'm familiar with how quickly things can grow and change. Groton is no exception. It's inevitable, and it's important. But we must ensure that Groton's growth does not change the things which make it our home. The Mystic Oral School is a perfect example of this. The proposal simply does not align with the surrounding family neighborhood. With a sensible perspective, we can provide Groton with revenue without burdening the taxpayer, but to do so, we need someone who has experience with contracts, budgeting, and monitoring tax dollars for proper use and provision of services. I am that someone. For the last 20 years, I have worked at a private nonprofit as the Director of Contracts. There, I am at the helm of distributing over $3 million through an RFP process each and every year. If elected, I will utilize my skills to fight for economic development that will create tax revenue while remaining environmentally conscious. I will also work to help make the Town Council cohesive and respectful regardless of political affiliation or differing opinions. Having a respectful dialogue is a necessary condition for town business, however. As of now, the rules and protocols for meetings are riddled with artificial time constraints, making it nearly impossible for a conversation to be had, let alone constructive. If elected, I hope to remove these constraints and offer both counselors and constituents sufficient time to discuss town business. Lastly, there are a few things I'd like to share with the people of Groton. I'd like them to know that my name is Kathy Chase and I'm running for Groton Town Council. I'd like them to know that after 60 years of living in Groton, I'm the right person for the job because I know that the job is to represent the town people, not myself or my party. Because when I speak on a topic, I've done my research, and because all I want is what's best for Groton and to keep volunteering my time to help shape its future. I'd like the people of Groton to know that I will not talk just to hear myself speak, that I have no political agenda, and that I hope to earn their vote come Election Day. Once again, my name is Kathy Chase. Vote for me November 2nd, Row 2B. Thank you.
Hello, Groton residents. My name is Edward Jacob and I'm your Democratic candidate for Town Council. And I want to start off by introducing myself. I'm a native to Groton. I was one of the last classes to attend the original Fitch Middle School, where I then attended Fitch High School and graduated there in 2014. I then attended Norwich University in Northfield, Vermont, and graduated in 2018 with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science. After graduation, I returned home here in Groton to look for work. I've worked on Bob Statch's state senate campaign and have volunteered for State Representative Connolly and Dela Cruz's campaigns. I'm currently on the RTM for District 2 and a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. I recently worked at the Connecticut General Assembly as an Assistant Clerk for the Reddervens Affairs Committee. I continue to be a proactive member of our community by volunteering at the Senior Center and the Mystic Chamber of Commerce. So while I'm running, I'm a young motivated minority who can continue to bring diversity to the town. I hope to include an emerging demographic of young and minority individuals, to name a few, as they move into the town and invest in it. What are my overall objectives? Approachability: I want every single member of our community to be able to reach out to me and have a simple conversation about topics of interest. Effectiveness: I intend to represent you, and I will do the research and ask those tough questions and do the job I am elected to do. Efficiency: Being thorough and by working with others, facilitating a fluent operational town government. What are some of my priorities? There are many. I am not a one-issue candidate, but for the faintest of time, I have boiled them down to three things I would like to work on if elected. COVID-19 response: I would like to get COVID-19 under control for the health and safety of our Groton residents, with a more comparable measure for us and for our families. I intend to continue to provide the support needed to our health agencies and our residents. We must continue to have pop-up vaccination and testing clinics around town so residents can at least have those resources available to them if needed. I do think there's a light at the end of the tunnel. We must persevere. Economic growth: I want the town to continue to have those revenue sources, which then in turn can maintain stable taxes and avoid steep increases in taxes. I would focus on budget justification per department when reviewing requests. Remaining fiscally responsible is a must as we progress into the 21st century. And infrastructure: Apart from continuing to maintain buildings and roads, I would like to work in supporting coastal resiliency. It's essential we prepare to protect and recover from increasing natural disasters. Let me be clear, I am still passionate about doing something with those unused buildings around town. I want to find the possibility of developing those properties appropriately to the surrounding area and for the town's benefit. Rest assured, as a counselor, these won't be unexpected developments coming from thin air. I will go through the many processes the town has, and I intend to scrutinize and question everything and everyone that comes to our town for the benefit of protecting all of our taxpayers. Now, what are the critical differences between me and my opponents? One critical difference between other candidates and me is that I am a young, passionate individual. I am eager to put in the work and respectfully work with others who have a difference in opinions. This Democratic slate is diverse in age, ethnicities, and socioeconomic backgrounds, and I think we are better to represent and fight for a better Groton. While I'm young and seen as new, I want voters to know that I'm experienced in leadership and government and ready to take on the challenge as a Town Counselor. We will not agree on everything, but rest assured, I will vote with conviction to the best of my ability for Groton. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to watch or hear some of the information about me. If you want to follow me on the campaign trail, follow me on Facebook at Edward Jacob for Groton. I hope to have your support on November 2nd on Row A. Thank you and stay safe.
Hello, my name is Bruce Jones and I'm running for Groton Town Council this November 2nd. I'm currently the RTM Representative for District 7 in Groton. I'm Chairman of the RTM Recreation Committee and Liaison for the Trails Coordinating Task Force, among the Board of Directors of our public access TV station, SEC TV, and a member of the Sustainability Crew for the Groton Open Space Association. We keep the trails open, remove down trees, and much more. I'm a graphic designer, author, and product developer, now focusing on community service, and I'm married and a father of two daughters. Community is work when people take part and contribute. As a current RTM member, I have enjoyed learning about and contributing to the Town of Groton. The RTM is a great place to gain knowledge and understanding about our town. I've learned how it works and the current issues we are facing. I now feel ready to increase my involvement with the move to the Town Council and continuing my support for the town. I've been focusing on three areas during this campaign. The first is working with our open space and conservation land. We have four fantastic trails and open space partners in the town. Groton Town and city spaces such as Cop Family Park and Eastern Point Beach, State of Connecticut with sites like Bluff Point and Haley Farm, Groton Open Space Association with the Sheep Farm, and Avalonia with more woodlands. It's important for everyone to have recreational spaces available to them. COVID proved how valuable open space and trails were for the citizens of Groton, and adults and kids walked our trails and explored our open spaces. Land usage increased. Outdoor recreation is a great way to increase health and fitness in our community. I look forward to continuing my support for our trails and open space. My second priority is making it easy to open, maintain, and grow a business in Groton. I built a small business from the ground up and have maintained it for over 35 years. I love being a small business owner. This gives me insights into the benefits that businesses bring to our community and to our families. We build businesses by sharing ideas, listening, and working together, and I want to bring the skills I have learned to the council to help our small businesses thrive and be successful. Businesses are a key to a successful community. Supporting our economic development team and working with their businesses is important. Keeping businesses strong is essential to our growth. And finally, the National Council on Aging and the National Institute of Senior Centers recognizes the Groton Senior Center for their outstanding service. We are one of the best in the state, if not the country. 14% of our population is 65 or older, so it's important to have strong senior center with great programs and services for our community. I look forward to keeping the momentum going and improving access to our programs. I'm Bruce Jones, and I look forward to continuing my service to the Town of Groton, and I hope to have your vote on November 2nd.
Hello, I'd like to start by thanking Sean Greeley and the staff here at the Groton Public Library for making this possible. My name is Robert Boris. I've been here in Groton since I was 11, working at my family technology company on Thame Street. My experience working in an entrepreneurial environment my whole life informs my decision-making. I did my undergraduate at Syracuse and a master's in economics at the London School of Economics. Some core values of mine are fiscal responsibility, accountability, transparency, educational opportunity, diversity, and a respect for the rights and opinions of all members of our community. I want to take the rest of my time to quickly give you a sense of how I would use my voice on your behalf if you were to elect me to Town Council. Fiscal responsibility: The Town of Groton has a budget surplus of more than 20% of annual expenditure. What percent surplus is actually necessary to maintain our good credit rating? Why are we accumulating more than that? Why are we generating large, unanticipated surpluses? Why are the budget projections so far off? Members of our community are on fixed income, retirees and seniors, and artificially high taxes threaten their ability to afford to stay in their homes. The town has earned the same solid credit rating when surpluses were held to single digits. So what's changed? Accountability: The town is dealing with a situation at the moment where a non-conforming development project has been unanimously promoted by the Town Council in an agreement signed with a developer who has some very serious past performance deficiencies and a record of real estate malfeasance. The Town Council claims not to have been aware of the developer's record and reputation. Why is publicly available background information not being examined prior to the town entering into development agreements? Why are simple forms and questionnaires such as the town collects for job applicants not being required from interested parties at the time they submit proposals? What is the responsibility of the town attorney on this issue? Transparency: Transparency is as much about restraining the use of closed-door executive sessions as it is about asking the right, specific questions to the town manager and the professional town staff. This provides them with the opportunity to brief the public about the hard work they've been doing on behalf of the taxpayer. Transparency is also about consistently integrating new information, technology, and tools and best practices into city operations to make public disclosure seamless, organized, immediately, as automatic as possible. Educational opportunity: Our kids have been significantly disadvantaged due to the COVID lockdowns. Now more than ever, we need to be doing all we can to help them catch up. Are we creating all the internship opportunities possible across all levels of town government? There are many subject matter experts with deep institutional knowledge in our town structures who could be amazing mentors to young, motivated people who have an interest in their subject area. Diversity of opinion: Almost half a decade of any one party holding every seat on the Town Council is not good for the town. An echo chamber promotes lapses in judgment and lax oversight, such as we see with the Mystic Oral School debacle. The Town Council should ideally reflect the wide spectrum of life experiences, professional talents, and different approaches to problem-solving that exist within our town. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I'm Robert Boris, and I would be honored to serve you. Thank you.
Hello, Groton City. Hello, Paquannic Bridge. Hello, Subbase. Hello, Newink. Hello, Groton Long Point. Hello, Old Mystic. And hello, Mystic. My name is Andre Bumgardner and I'm seeking my third term to the Groton Town Council. The global coronavirus pandemic upended our lives and paralyzed our local economy. It also exposed that great inequities exist within our community, from housing to public health, economic and food security, and access to water, heat, and the internet. Here, in our very own backyard, more than 200 Pfizer scientists work around the clock to develop the COVID-19 vaccine, from nurses and doctors to home health aides, caregivers to children, and CNAs. Our town is home to frontline workers working around the clock to keep us safe. Our council has put public health first. Lives are on the line. We must begin to restore our trust in science. Our neighbors and small businesses are struggling, and as a local leader, I needed to offer solutions that actually help people. The Town of Groton chose my plan to provide residents relief from paying property and car taxes, as well as eliminating late charges for utility payments, making Groton the only municipality in our region to offer tax deferment and a low-interest rate program during the pandemic. But we can do more. These challenges are opportunities for Groton, and confronting them will require us to collaborate, critically think, and problem-solve. As the youngest legislator ever elected in Connecticut history and the first Black and Latino state representative for Groton, and now as a Town Counselor and City Planning and Zoning Commissioner, I continue to be a voice for a new generation of leaders in our town. Throughout my time serving our community, I worked across party lines, brought dollars back to Groton, and delivered on the promises I made to voters. As your Town Counselor, I will continue to be a champion for climate action, fiscal discipline, and fixing our roads and sidewalks. I have supported smart growth and expansion at Electric Boat for the Columbia Class Submarine Program. Last year, Groton took to the streets demanding that we rebuild a more equitable society through restorative justice, dismantling systemic racism, and closing the digital divide. As Public Safety Committee Chair, I heard your demands and collaborated with town and community leaders to discuss community policing and accountability. If re-elected, we will explore partnerships with labor and nonprofits to offer city residents and apprenticeships and skills training. We will enact a complete streets policy to better protect pedestrians and cyclists and adopt a responsible contractor ordinance to protect our local workforce and safeguard taxpayers from projects like the proposed Mystic Education Center redevelopment, of which I am the second counselor on record to oppose the development agreement. We also see the storms intensifying. Extreme weather is the new normal. Yukon Circle projects sea level to rise 20 inches by 2050. Homes and businesses will be underwater. We must take action now. As your Town Counselor, I will continue pressing the town to install solar panels on public buildings, convert food waste to compost for our parks, electricity for our homes, and biofuel to power our municipal fleet, and an increased investment in open space, sustainability, and coastal resiliency. My mom is a bilingual educator and school administrator. We talk a lot about the lack of resources for Spanish-speaking residents and our youth. As a kid, I spent a lot of time on the garbage truck with my dad. I respect the men and women serving our community, especially during these unprecedented times, just like my parents have. I've seen the police, fire, and EMS develop a relationship with my brother who has autism. This is the community I know, and this is the community I want to build. Groton expects transformative leadership from their Town Council. I will continue to bring energy, new ideas, and my state and local experience to the job. You will always have a voice and a seat at the table. Please find me on Election Day on Row A, 5A. Vote Andre Bumgardner, your Democrat, for Groton Town Council. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you at the polls on Tuesday, November 2nd, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. See you soon. Bye now.
I'm David McBride and I'm running for Town Council. I spent time in Groton growing up as a kid. I spent time in Groton growing up as a kid, and I enjoyed it so much that I moved here full-time in the late 1990s after college. I'm married, and we have five children, two of whom are still in the Groton public system. I received my bachelor's from Seton Hall University and my MBA in Finance from the University of Connecticut. I have over 25 years of professional experience in finance, municipal government, and starting and operating small businesses. This experience will prove invaluable as a Town Counselor. A few examples of this experience is that I'm the current Director of Finance for the City of New London, the past Director of Finance for the Mohegan Travel Government. I started a nonprofit in memory of my best friend, Jim Greenleaf, who perished on 9/11 and whom we honor and remember each year by providing over $50,000 in scholarships to high school students in Southeast Connecticut. I also own a few small businesses, including the local Groton Dairy Queen. If I'm elected, I have a few main objectives I'd like to focus on as a counselor right out of the gate. First is to focus on the budget. I'll be a counselor who will look at the budget in detail and will scrutinize every single line item to ensure every taxpayer dollar is being used properly for all of the residents of Groton. I am not looking to reduce services, but to see if there are any areas where we can reduce the cost to the taxpayer through efficiencies, automation, or revised purchasing practices. My second priority is to focus on smart economic growth. This is essential to increasing our town revenues and avoiding future tax increases. I understand what is involved in starting a business, and I have the background to help the town make smart business decisions with developers. I will also assure you that the people living near any proposed developments in the future are included early, often, and in all phases of discussions. I'm also a huge proponent of long-term planning, and I will make such a priority. I will urge the next council to develop a 10-year plan that projects out many areas that we can predict, anticipate, and then properly plan for. I also feel strongly about a few other areas. I want to maintain the solid services that Groton currently provides, especially to our great public school system. I want to continue to support our public safety departments, as such as vital to our residents and our businesses. And I want to maintain and continue to improve our town's infrastructure, our roads, our bridges, electric, water, and sewer. And I'd also like to look into establishing a stormwater authority, something other municipalities are doing, to increase town revenues throughout the state. The American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA funds, is also an extremely important topic. For those of you who are not familiar with this, this is the money that Groton will be receiving from the federal government because of COVID. The town will receive $8.5 million. Some of this has already been received. That's some serious money that needs to be put to good use to have long-term impacts in our community. I'm very familiar with how this money works and what process can be used, and as a counselor, I will be bringing specialized knowledge to this area and how that money can be spent to ensure the best long-term interest for Groton. The Mystic Oral School property. The current council have already taken legal steps to indicate that the developer has not lived up to their responsibilities. Groton's Planning and Zoning Commission has also indicated they are not inclined to make any more zoning changes that are required. So from the outside looking in, as I'm not privy to confidential matters, this chapter seems to be coming to a close, and I am in complete support of closing this chapter and moving on. Groton residents, please know that I will work tirelessly for all of the residents throughout the town. My experience is what differentiates me from the other candidates, and I will use this experience to continue to propel Groton forward. It's a very important time for Groton. We have a tremendous number of opportunities in front of us, and if handled properly, many more will come in the future. I hope that you believe my proven experience will assist Groton in making good, long-term decisions as we move forward and to continuously improve Groton. Groton residents, I am asking for your vote in the upcoming election on Tuesday, November 2nd. Thank you.
My name is Bill Ferguson, and I'm running to be your next member of the Groton Town Council. It is my hope that I may serve the great town of Groton after having lived here for nearly 30 years. This town has served as home for me and my two children, and I feel it's time to give back to this community that has given my family so much. I have been serving the Mystic community for the past 10 years in a variety of roles: President of the Mystic and No Inc. Library Board, Member of the Groton Historic District Commission, a Commissioner to Improve the Mystic Parking Situation, and my current role as President of the Downtown Mystic Merchants. I am very proud to share that wherever I've served, the community has seen growth and progress. The library saw its budget expanded. Mystic will see a growth in parking opportunities next year, and Downtown Mystic has seen a development in business like no other time in its history. And I want to add that I'm humbled that the Eastern Connecticut Chamber of Commerce named me Tourism Leader of the Year in recognition of this volunteer work. Having seen the positive results of my leadership in Mystic, I am now here to bring my energy and management skills to the whole town of Groton. I sit before you today to share my goals as a Town Counselor serving you, my Groton neighbor. My first goal is education. After working as an educator for over 20 years, my top priority is making sure our school budgets are robust enough to serve our community's children. With the pandemic in full swing this past year, despite the hard work and dedication put forth by our Groton Public School teachers, the school year was a difficult one for our children. Trying to learn in a pandemic is hard enough. I did not want our town's teachers to be hindered by a limited school budget. We need to keep class sizes small and hire more support staff. Education creates opportunity, and every child in Groton deserves an opportunity to achieve their educational goals, now and in the future. My second priority is supporting business growth. As my work with the Mystic Merchants has shown, I am pro-business. We have seen Downtown Mystic become a culinary destination, and the surrounding businesses have benefited from the many successful restaurants. In Groton, we have two industrial giants that employ many great Groton workers. We need to grow businesses around these giants and increase the tax base for the term. Increasing the tax base lessens the town's impact on the wallet of each Groton resident. And my third and final priority is re-establishing trust and transparency. I want to bring transparency back to our government. I am pro both economic development and pro-housing development. I want those who work in Groton to live in Groton, shop in Groton, and be entertained in Groton. But I want all of these forms of development to be done in a way that the voters feel like you have been listened to, heard, and then given a chance to hear and speak all of the views presented. All of these only happens when there's transparency in the government and its processes. I want you to see us as government officials be clear and transparent in their decision-making. Currently, with one party in power, not all voices and opinions have been shared. As a result, not everything that the council has done has left the public with a clear sense of trust. I want you to feel trust in your town government, and transparency is the way to regain that voter's trust. When a Town Council decision is made, you should feel like your voice has been heard, the decision-making process has been clear, and there is no ambiguity about what just happened. It is my goal to bring a sense of trust back to our local government. So this is me, Bill Ferguson. I am here to serve you, the Groton voter, and I hope that I can count on you to come out on November 2nd to cast your vote so that I may serve as your next Town Counselor. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Portia Bordelon, and I'm an incumbent candidate for the Groton Town Council. I am a 41-year-old mother of two children in the community, a longtime Groton resident, and active member of the Democratic Party. I have been an elected representative for just about four years. I was elected to the RTM in 2017, appointed to fill a vacancy on the Town Council in 2019, and elected to that seat later that same year. Since I've been on the council, I have served on the Public Safety Committee, Long-Term Recovery Committee, the Athletic Fields Task Force, and the Short-Term Rental Task Force. Outside of public office, I am a board member for the No Inc. Community Support Services, an organization that provides support for families and children of the region who are in need. Also, from 2019 to 2020, I have served as a community ambassador with the Health Improvement Collaborative, a project sponsored by Legelite Health District. As an elected representative, I have consistently worked to improve accessibility to support services and assistance with navigation of these services. I believe in government for the people, by the people. I believe in equitable, enriching, individualized education in our schools, creating dependable, sustainable, community-rooted, and environmentally responsible economic growth. I also believe in preserving open spaces, supporting seniors, youth, the military and their families, along with ensuring all citizens of all districts in the city and the town feel their interests are fairly represented by their local elected officials. My record in public service is a testimony to the unique mix of courageous, creative, and critical thinking I have brought to the Town Council. Representing the dynamic, diverse tapestry of people and interests in this municipality in a fair and faithful fashion has been as challenging as it has been rewarding, and I hope to have earned your support to continue on for another term. If elected, I will continue to advocate for actions that will grow the grand list in a smart, environmentally responsible, community-rooted, and socially sustainable manner. I will advocate for equitable management of resources across all districts of the town and serve as a frank, open, and honest arbiter of any discussion of issues that concern the citizens. The Town Council is a deliberative body that should serve as a conduit for civil conversation amongst citizens in this town. While it is important for a counselor to have goals and ambitions for the town, I do not believe it is essential to have rigid agenda in mind. The most important functions of a counselor are to serve as an honest broker of information, to be frank, efficient, and to engage with the public as a responsive representative of the constituents. To perform these functions faithfully, one must have passion for the people and value the diversity of voices and vocations that live in the town. My record on the RTM and the Town Council, along with my overall experience in life leading up to and through this past term and current campaign, testify to the fact that these qualities resonate within me. I am excited and eager to continue to provide positive energy to the town, to give back to the community in which I was raised, came of age, and chose to stay to start my own family. As an elected representative, I believe it is my primary responsibility to give voice to the concerns and interests of the constituents. In this duty, I promise to continue to be persistent, passionate, proactive, and present. I promise to continue to be your voice. Please consider giving me your vote. I encourage all of Groton citizens to come out and vote on Tuesday, November 2nd. I hope to have your support.
Hello, my name is Jennifer White. I'm a wife, mother, finance professional, fiscal conservative, Republican, and Groton resident. In today's world, we tend to assign labels to people with preconceived notions of what that means. However, what I want you to gain by listening to me is that I'm an honest and caring individual, regardless of labels, whom if elected, will ensure that all Groton residents' views are represented. As an elected official, I will do my best to drive open communication. This means taking the time to listen to other counselors and residents and not limit or silence their voice. This also means greater transparency with less executive sessions and behind closed-door decision. It means having respectful dialogue regardless of opinion. Groton residents deserve open communication from its elected leaders. As a voter, you should ensure that the council is made up of representative people willing to listen and to be open to ideas. As a counselor, I will ensure that the Town Council focuses on what is truly important: building a better Groton for future generations. I will work to ensure that Groton remains a viable town where families can live, work, shop, and enjoy the community. I will work tirelessly to prevent Groton from becoming a parking lot where people come to work and live elsewhere. Instead, I will focus on developing our town into a cultural and economic hub of southeastern Connecticut. We have the infrastructure, we just need the vision. We need to invest in our town in a responsible and planned manner. For example, we cannot and should not support the mega Mystic Oral School development as it exists. Any development on that property should only be residential, which is comparable to the neighboring community. We need to stop random growth but promote planned growth. We can't grow Groton too fast, nor can we sacrifice residential neighborhoods for multi-use zoning. Inherently, we want Groton to remain a safe community that provides a sound education for the next generation. The council, in conjunction with the Board of Education, should hold school administrators accountable for our children's education. We need to ensure that teachers, parents, and especially students are supported. We need to make sure that the children are not being left behind because of the pandemic. We also want businesses for employment, for ease of commute, and diversification of tax base. We should help define our community. We need a diverse and inclusive Town Council. Diversity in terms of background and thought is far more important in a diverse group of individuals who think alike in lockstep solidarity. So that is what I envision, my role and my goals for Groton as a counselor. Now the question becomes, why do you think I'm qualified? I've worked for nearly 20 years in various capacities, ranging from expense management, planning, operational effectiveness, and implementing financial controls. I take the time to understand issues by asking the right questions, to learn, to assess, to evaluate, and to make recommendations. I earned my Master's in Business Administration from one of the best entrepreneurial colleges in the United States, which has been instrumental in me thinking out of the box. Besides my work and academic experience, I volunteered at senior-level positions as Board of Director for the United Way of Central Northeastern Connecticut, where I chaired the Operations Committee, responsible for over 25 million of community donations. Also, as a community advisor, board member for Hartford Hospital's Partnership for Breast Care, we raised enough funds for a mammography van. In service to the town of Groton, I was a Commissioner on the Groton Town Charter Revision. Although I don't have any experience in town government, I do have experience elsewhere. At one point, every experienced counselor was a novice. So give this novice a chance on November 2nd. A vote for me, John White, is a vote for a new voice to represent you. I am a dedicated, committed individual who performs her due diligence. But more importantly, I will represent you first and foremost. I won't vote the party line, which is what we have now. We need a council that will work together to ensure the best decisions are made for the community with full transparency. Because at the end of the day, this community is comprised of all of us: independents, Democrats, and Republicans. On Election Day, vote for transparency. Vote your voice. Vote 7B. Jennifer White. Thank you.
Hello, Groton. I'm Rachel Franco, born, raised, and living my best life in Groton. I've lived in Paquonic Bridge, High Rock Trailer Park, and the City of Groton, and now Mystic. So I'm familiar with and love all parts of Groton. I'm married, have three grown sons, and a chocolate lab named Bernie. I graduated from Fitch many moons ago. Go Falcons! I then received my accounting degree from Three Rivers Community College. I'm a business manager in a full charge of payroll, human resources, and accounting for a business. This has prepared me to deal with many issues as a Town Counselor. While I'm a mother, wife, and business manager, I'm also one of your Town Counselors. I have happily served you and my community for the last four years, and I am seeking your support for another term. Let me share with you a few accomplishments I'm most proud of and achieved while on the council. Number one, last year, I marched with and listened to my community, who spoke about the changes needed in policing in the aftermath of Mr. George Floyd's horrible death. I met with and worked with many residents in our community, our police department, and RTM representatives, notably Representative Melinda Cassieri. I then worked to bring real change to Groton in the form of pilot program for social worker to be embedded with the police and re-establishing community policing. These initiatives successfully passed the budget. I then received a very rare endorsement from the Groton Town Police Union. Their endorsement stated, "You have the best interests of both the community and the officers who serve and protect it in mind." And they said, "My balanced approach speaks volumes." I am honored by their endorsement. Number two, I had the idea to create a beautification committee. One attribute of a community that draws people is beauty. This committee is run by volunteers, and they're off to a great start. You can see some of their accomplishments when you look at the spring daffodils at the I- the I-95 submarine sign, the new plantings at the town annex, town hall, and Sutton Park. Many great beautification initiatives are on the way, and I am very excited to see the committee blossom. Number three, I am proud to say that during my two terms, the council has substantially grown the town's savings account, also called the rainy day fund. I brought forward a successful motion to raise the minimum fund balance requirement from 11% to 15%. Saving responsibly has put Groton in a great position with the bond agencies by showing Groton is saving for emergencies. This brings down costs when we undertake big projects like building new schools. At the same time, the town's meal rate has been stable and is one of the lowest in the state. I'm proud this council was able to achieve all of this. Number four, the council has achieved more in terms of environmental protections than any previous council. You can count on me to continue to support efforts to address the impacts of climate change, and you can count on me to support our schools and our education budget. I believe education is one of the most important services our town provides, and like Democrat colleagues, I believe in science, and I will seek to solve problems with factual, evidence-based science. I want to move on now and discuss a few items I'd like to work on if you choose to reelect me. I'd like to bring back the once-thriving downtown Groton by working with our Economic Development Commission. I believe we must bring together private commercial property owners who own sections of downtown Groton with commercial realtors and commercial lenders to successfully work on this. I am determined. Let's create an environment where businesses will be clamoring to come to Groton. I want to increase our available athletic fields for our schools and for parks and recreation. We've created an Athletic Fields Task Force to accomplish this. I want to support their efforts. We also need to increase maintenance of our highly-used open spaces, and I'd like to see us add neighborhood parks where there is a need. To sum it up, I want to keep Groton the wonderful place it is to live, work, and retire. I want to increase our quality of life by keeping our services in fine working order, maintaining our infrastructure and town assets, and increase the amenities we desire. I want us to find solutions to the issues that face Groton and work together to solve these issues while always being transparent and inviting the community to participate and help shape the future of Groton. As you know, nothing happens overnight, and in government, it's even slower. That's why I'm asking for your vote to serve another term on the town council. Send me back to finish the work I started. On Election Day, November 2nd, you can find my name on Row A. Rachel Franco, Democrat. Thank you, Groton, and make sure to vote and always be Groton Proud. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Juan Melendez, and I'm running for reelection to the town council. I began volunteering in Groton six years ago with my appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority. After two years on that body, I served one term on the RTM and one term on the council. My work on the council has led me to be a co-chair on Groton's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Collaborative. This collaborative is a partnership between town staff, elected officials, and community members that is dedicated to ensuring Groton is a town that everyone can be proud to live in. The collaborative does work in many areas, including education and outreach, but my work with the body has focused on collaborating with the town's HR department to review its hiring practices. Our goal is to improve our outreach to underrepresented groups, allowing us to eventually have our town staff be as diverse as Groton's community as a whole. I've also been fortunate enough to serve as the Chair of the Town School Readiness Council. The School Readiness Council, in partnership with Children First Grind, has applied for and received multiple grants in the last two years, including some as large as $30,000. This money is used as a supplement to our Great Education Program, with a particular emphasis on closing the achievement gap for pre-K students, ensuring that every child is ready for kindergarten, regardless of socioeconomic standing. If reelected, I intend to continue this important work while also advocating for the funding of the new resilience and sustainability coordinator position. As a coastal municipality, the effects of climate change have a disproportionate effect on us. Having a full-time coordinator will allow us to create a comprehensive plan to combat these negative effects, while also applying for grants to help offset the cost. The town will also allocate $8.6 million in the next two years, thanks to federal funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act. I hope to direct as much of this money as possible to the people in town who have fallen behind on rent or mortgage payments, as well as those who are struggling with food and security. Finally, I hope to address the opioid epidemic by advocating for the addition of a full-time addiction councillor to the Human Services Department. Overdose deaths due to opioid abuse are increasing every year, and the aid coming from the state and federal government are not enough to slow down the problem. I believe it's the town's responsibility to act. If your vision for Groton is similar to mine, I hope you will come out to vote on Tuesday, November 2nd, for me and the entire Democratic slate. You can find us on Row A.